Mr. Jim Ben Angela?
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Here.
Mr. Scopora?
Here.
Mr. Boldnary?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mayor Griffin? Present. All present. Okay, now I have a motion for approval of the minutes for the March 11th, 2013 meeting, please.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that the minutes be approved and accepted and permitted to remain on Secretary's desk where it will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried, thank you. All right, we have a motion for approval of fiscal department reports and pay bills for the month of March 2013. May I have a motion?
So moved, so moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Wolfert. Second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldnary, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. All right, now we have time for citizens' requests and comments. If you have anything to go to the back and state your name and address, and some people get five minutes and some don't.
James Miller, 127 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe here. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody all that see all the new faces tonight, and I really appreciate that. I do anyway, because I think it's important that the people show up and know what's going on for council meetings and that there. So, thank you for coming. Also, I've brought it up in past council meetings, and it's regarding the point at which citizens request and the citizens are able to speak. Now, as you know, the citizens are only allowed to speak at this time prior to anything being discussed by council. And, of course, at the prep meetings, you have your agenda meeting and that's a setup. And then you have your written agenda for tonight's meeting. However, at the one very recent meeting, we changed the agenda. We amended the agenda three different items. They were not brought up at the end of prep meeting, and they were not listed on the sheets for this meeting. So therefore, nobody would know what to say if they wanted to say anything about it. And I think it's important that we try to change the way that the request time is at the, you know, when we speak. So possibly the people can, the citizens, I'm sure we want our citizens well informed, and that's why they're here tonight. So I just think that it's critical that whenever we're going to change the items, we should be a little considerate of the people that may be interested in it. And that's what I have to say. I would hope that council would think about that in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Hi, my name is Sheila Danielle. I live at 1750 Raymond Avenue. I have a little bit of an issue. Had a young lady that spent the night at my home. During the middle of the night, she robbed my home. I contacted her parents. Her mother admitted to me that this child robbed my home. I gave her over a weekend, this was on March 15th, to bring the money to my house. She did not. On Monday morning, the 18th of March, I contacted Jimmy Boomer. I left a message with him stating that what had happened, left him, spoke with him personally, said that he would contact her. I gave her this child's mother's name and phone number. On the following, it would have been Good Friday, it was a little bit late in the afternoon, it was about two minutes till three, when I contacted Jimmy's office again, I assumed he was already gone, so I left a message. Today's now two weeks since I spoke to him. I've had no return phone call. The child's parents admitted to me that the child robbed my home in the middle of the night. The child admitted to my daughter that she had stolen the money. And I have no charges, no return phone call, anything. So basically, what my child has learned, the money that was stolen from my house was taken from the school candy drop. What my child has learned is that it's okay to have your belongings stolen in the middle of the night in your home, and that there's no safety in Latrobe, in your own home, or any justification for having your home robbed. Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Before we go, did you, what was your response to this issue?
I talked with the other parent, and she said she was going to take care of it. There was a discrepancy on how much money was actually taken, that she said she would make good on the money. I didn't feel that that was a pressing police matter, that I needed to spend any more time on that after I talked with the other parents.
Is there a follow-up to find out if there was resolution?
There was not.
Complaint filed and report completed?
There isn't a criminal complaint usually filed on a de minimis infraction like that. It's usually handled within department.
I've never received a return phone call, nothing. Nothing, as of this date, and I brought my phone, because this is the only phone that I have. I have the two phone calls to him and the phone call from the parent telling me that she was going to return the money to my home. Nothing. And that was on Friday the 15th. I gave her Saturday Friday, she told me it was Friday at 3:00, she would return the money to my house. She never showed up, so I figured, well, maybe they needed the weekend to come up with the $46 that was stolen. Nothing on Saturday, nothing on Sunday, so I contacted Jimmy at 1:30, it was 1:29 in the afternoon on Monday, the 18th.
Jim, would you advise her to file charges now of that? No?
They won't take them.
Oh, I contacted Child Protective Services, and they told me to speak to Jimmy. And I, you know, I've already made the three phone calls.
Number one, we don't take complaints over the phone.
Well, you didn't tell me that. You told me you were going to return my phone call.
I'm not going to sit in a council meeting and argue over this.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just stating what you told me. You told me you were going to return my call, that's why you asked for my phone number.
How old is the child?
About 13.
Oh, then I think the parents are responsible. Mr. Slister, is that not correct, that a certain sum of money, I believe it's under $500, that the parents are responsible for payment when there's a theft?
I think you're right.
And honestly, it's not even the dollar amount, because I had to pay for the money to go to school. The issue is, is I have a 16-year-old child that's living in this town, that now knows she wanted me to contact Jimmy Boomer, which I did, because she felt violated. And out of it, we're still waiting. When do I even get the respect of, hey, we're going to have to do this, I'll get back to you? Nothing, just totally blown off. And that's not fair, because she's a child growing up that has been in this town since she's three years old. She has pride in this town, and that doesn't show that she's respected and what her future is in this town.
Jimmy, do you think she set an appointment up?
She can come in by, I'll save time for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim Bolton, 225 Irving Avenue. Eight months ago, there was a discussion pertaining to picking up the residential garbage. And you still have one in the back room here showing, it seems like that's a trend, you like to go to the containers. We got rid of the garbage cans about 40 years ago for a labor expense. The garbage structure, I think, was getting too big for the aisles they couldn't get back and forth. That's when the blue bag came in, and made it easier for people as such, carrying their garbage from the back porch backyard to their house or out to the front street. In some of the neighborhoods in Latrobe here, if you looked, there's no direct access from their backyards to the front street. They have to take their 30, 40-pound garbage bag through their house, down the steps, set it on the front street. This may present a problem, I think, for quite a number of people. I don't know, I'm just guessing, looking at the neighborhoods and so forth. Before we jump into, just, I know it's probably the trend of the future and so forth, I think it should really be publicized, the local paper, and the picture of the containers and what your proposal is. And run a survey, maybe you could have a hotline into City Hall or something to see what the people think. Plan A is stays the way it is right now with the bags. Or Plan B, switch to the containers. Once again, I think it'd be a burden for some people to get the containers from their back porch or backyard, through their house, down the steps to the sidewalk. I think it'd be nice to have a wide-open opinion from people that are going to pay the bill. Getting back to that eight months ago, a couple months later, the open bids, one of the bids retained a proposal to take over the operation of the transfer station. There were some that looked a little surprised, some I don't think. All of a sudden, the transfer station has become a hot issue. And companies are looking at it. It seems like one in particular. At your agenda meeting here, notice was noted pertaining to a proposal that we eliminate the transfer trucks, because they're worn out, which is hard to believe, but I know that the equipment up at the garage is maintained and serviced. You eliminate those two trucks, move the drivers over to the street department, there's no income to pay for them. You also killing your commercial business, which from what I could see, you proposed before last year, I think, you've got your commercial garbage pickup, where the city took roll-off boxes out, demolition sites and so forth, brought in half a million dollars. Why are you so concerned about getting rid of this transfer station? I don't know. After 40 years of operation, now we want to get rid of it? You're in trouble financially, and I said three years ago, I could see you were in trouble. After looking at the papers I got from City Hall here, your city manager's report, and I paid for the copies. You had a deficit budget in '07, you had a deficit budget in '08, you had another one in '09, you had another one in '10. In the meantime, in '09, you passed a millage increase, one and a half mills of real estate. Next year, you passed another one, one and a half. That ice storm was a godsend for you. That transfer station was a goldmine. Paid your bills, because I figure you were really in trouble in 2011. You may have even had to go to the bank to borrow money to finish paying your bills. Even if your 213 budget, you're going back to the general fund, $130,000. It's two mills. You dodged the bullet for a couple of years to get rid of that transfer station. It seems like you just want to give it away or something, I don't know. It's a tremendous opportunity for a company. Now, are you going to give them the roll-off boxes for the commercial work in Latrobe here? Are you giving them free space through the lower gate to store their roll-off boxes? It doesn't make sense to me, I don't know. Last month, you came in with a statement, we get rid of those trucks, we transfer these people, give them that bomb down there, and we'll save money. I don't see it. I'm sorry. It brings to mind a little bit of a story, quickly. It's a fact that years ago, you had a traveling medicine show. You had Dr. Quack who proclaimed offering these bottles of medicine, that they were pure, all your medical wheels, even some aches and pains. Unfortunately, there was a gullible people there that even bought some of these bottles. I just hope, so many statements have been made here, that you aren't gullible. Thank you.
Mr. Bolton, to your points, two of them, you said it was option A and option B with regard to the citizens' recommendation? Right. Well, there was option C, and that was the 90, each citizen in this town had a choice. They could utilize the 90-gallon cart or continue using the bags with the tax, so you had that choice, okay?
I just think...
To your point, and the other...
You're going to tell them that you're contract, and I think, most people don't pay attention. They don't read the paper. I just feel, all of a sudden, here it is. And I think you really fill this through and all. I don't know, I could be wrong. For me, it's immaterial, I don't care. Fortunately, I have an alley right beside me, I can carry the garbage bag or what have you. Hell, and I had the business over 25 years, I paid you a garbage bill every month, and I never used it once. I had trucks going to the transfer station every day. So, once again, it's immaterial. But I think you started concerning about older people. There's some younger people, right over James Street there, that may have difficulty getting their garbage from the backyard to the front street.
Well, that's what I'm saying, sir. You have that, as it was originally proposed, you had that option. You could continue using the bags with the stickers, or you could take a 90-gallon cart. It was your choice, so...
What I'm saying, you're telling me personally and the people here, what I'm saying, you need a big front-page public notice what you're talking about.
And as to your concerns about the transfer station, it has, it is, you are correct in saying that if we did give the roll-off business to an outside contractor, the two employees who drive our trucks every day, we wouldn't have the income to move them over to Public Works. More than likely, we wouldn't have that income. So you are correct in that.
So are the elderly services.
Well, I'd have to question that, Mr. Boldnary, because I think the problem here is not the income from the transfer station, which is bound considerably, but it's the cost of the garage which you fostered them. You know, that's $258,000, and we were told when a garage was built, that the parking would pay for it. I got very good report here, or news, that it is not paying for the parking. All the parking is not paying for that garage. And there should be no reason why anybody in the Public Works Department should be laid off to pay for garage. And if that happens, then shame on us. And the other thing is, Mr. Bolton, this contract which we're letting does not include giving away the transfer station. That has been scrapped. The city will continue to operate the transfer station. To your second point, I wonder if you'd go back and grab one of those 96-gallon totes, if you would, and pull it up, so we can all get an idea of what they look like? All right, is that the 96 or is that the 66?
That's a 65, the 90's in the corner.
The 90's over in the corner. Can you get the big one, the 96-gallon one, over in the corner? And there's another one in the back, it's a 40-gallon, it's on the left, so that everybody in the viewing audience can see it. It's way in the back corner, and I don't want to put you to much work here, but I wonder if you wouldn't go back and get that one to come forward.
This is the first time we made a mark.
All right, now one thing, just put your hand over the winner of those three that you want in your backyard or on your front porch for recyclables.
No.
You won't do it? All right, thank you.
This thing is awkward, bringing across as a carpet. I have a paved alley. This would be awkward, taken up. My wife would let us sit. You want these on your alley?
No.
They're on wheels, and the idea is to tilt them, and the idea is we want to go to single-stream recycling, so we want to be able to recycle everything in one bin, instead of the small bins that have plastic and cans and things like that. We want to go to single-stream recycling, so you can put your newspapers in your cardboard and your plastic and everything in one container. And it increases the recycling that is done in your community, the statistics show that. It also decreases the amount of garbage, so instead of, you can still use bags, but instead of two bags, you might have one bag, because you've been able to recycle so much more of your refuse. And you can't do single-stream recycling unless you use some size of tote like that. And the new vehicles, they're automated, so there's an arm on them, and it just comes over, and it picks it up, and it dumps it in. That's why you have to use those kind of containers.
Number one, you have to be aware with the way the garbage gets picked up when we went to the blue bag. Instead of going to go for a garbage can, dumping it, taking the can back, normally they just do the can back. Now, garbage collector makes one trip, he picks up the bag and throws it in the truck. Here, you're going back those two trips again.
He doesn't have to get out of the truck for the, the truck does it automatically, he doesn't have to get out of it.
I don't think I've seen one of these trucks, Mr. Bolton, the one with the arm that comes out and grabs the garbage can.
On some of my streets...
I know what they do, I just have never seen one. Has anybody here ever seen one? Oh, we have one person, thank you very much. Two, down in North Carolina, correct, Mr. Boldnary, is that where you saw it?
What is your point, Mr. Jim? What is your point?
You're on ideal conditions. That arm isn't going to swing out anywhere on James Street, Irving Avenue, Gertrude Street. There's cars parked there.
This is state-of-the-art stuff that is used in most cities in the state.
I'm just saying, I think you should really get it out to the general public, let them decide too.
Okay, all right.
You're going to let the public know what they're investing in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolton. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Yeah, I have a question on that. The bigger containers, the 96-gallon ones I kept. On the performance programs, we give about $3,000 or more a year if I can hold those.
I'm not sure I followed the question.
If we go with the 96-gallon totes, the bigger ones I kept, and you have the performance grants you get, how much more money we make to go with the 96-gallon ones?
I'm not, again, as far as the exact figure, I mean, Ellen's in the room, she might have a better answer for that. Just to be clear, the bid that has been advertised or is out on the street and being distributed has no requirement of bins, has for recycling, nor for trash. So, to be clear, the system that's, will be proposed, and the proposal's received in May and reviewed in June, there will be, as we have it now, both for the trash and the bags and stickers, and for the recycling, being able to use the bins. If we're able to increase our recycling, there would be, you know, more revenue via grants that we could apply and get from the state.
And there's curbside recycle and stuff like that. Did you ever make a proposal to use that money to retain a currency employee who was working on a temporary agreement?
We have, in the past, used recycling grants to buy equipment.
That's not what I asked, because I asked if you could retain a current...
No, we've not.
What's that?
No, we've not used grants to retain staff.
Did you make a proposal like that at all? Did you ever mention it?
I have not made a proposal specific to retaining staff, we made the grants now. But I think to your point, again, there's a lot to discuss related to totes. For example, with larger tote, you might have less frequent pickups for recyclables, which may reduce the cost, you know, of the bid, for example, because the hauler would be making less trips through the town. The whole issue, though, hasn't really, you know, fully been vetted, to see which would be in most of our favor, whether it's to Mr. Bolton's concern about public preference or to the city's concern about total bottom cost.
Okay, I think we better, we can discuss that later, all right? If there are people who wish to speak. How about you?
I'm Angelo Caruso, I live on Irving Avenue. And I wanted to direct a question to the council and the mayor. About 20 years or so ago, I started a business in this town which I felt it needed, it was called the L&amp;L Quikler. And my son took the business over, and has had it for the last 20 years or so. Moved down to Depot Street, we put up a new building on property that nobody wanted, it sat empty for I don't know how many years down there, the city couldn't sell it. But he built the building down there, and is providing a service to this community. But from what I understand now, there's a small parcel property down there, back in the corner, by the prick bank and by the train bank, the road bank. But he went, he approached the city administration at that time, and he needed some more parking, and he said that he would clean the property up, asphalt it, keep it in shape for all the years, and they leased it to him. That was about 20 years ago. Now, my understanding is that the lease, from what I understand, was, was moving to sever the lease and take that property back away from him, which was a mudhole at that time when he took it over, and which would severely hurt the business, because he parks about six cars down there. And my question to council is, I understand there's big plans for that small parcel, I would like to know what they are. Council?
There is no plan, as far as I know, there's been no discussion with regard to that. All the transactions that have been done on that block of Depot Street have been conducted by the Community College. It hasn't been discussed ever in council, as far as I know, by me or anybody else that's sitting up here.
So in other words, you have great plans for it, that you're going to take the property away from them?
No, I'm saying, no, there's been none discussed. It's not been discussed.
Okay. That was my question, because I could probably sit here for the rest of the night and give you a lot of details of what's going on, but I don't want to take up the rest of the meeting. But that perturbed me, because he's been down all those years.
I understand why you would be, he's been a good citizen.
Oh, definitely. Like, that was the only tax-paying property in the whole Jefferson area, there's no more businesses down there except for it. But I just wanted to clear that up. My understanding was that you people wanted to take that property away from them, for, because you had greater plans for that little piece of property. And you say you don't.
I don't.
Right?
I'm saying I don't.
Ange, I agree with Mr. Bolton, and that's never been discussed on council floor amongst any members. We just approved that lease, it was in January, when I come across your desk. Nothing's been brought up about it.
No exam?
Sheila Danielle, again, I would just like to say, we've heard a lot of negative stories so far tonight, but I'd like to say to council, congratulations on Latrobe becoming part on the historical society noted, and this is the town where the banana split was originated from. Congratulations, guys, we made it on something.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, Jim, we're going to change. We're going to make a small change here. Under new business, there are a couple proclamations I'm going to read. I would like those people from Park and Earl of Trove, whatever you call them, after technology.
Don't jump, Barbara, go around the steps.
Okay, may I have your attention? All right, I have a proclamation I want to read. All right, this is a proclamation to commend Carpenter Technology Latrobe Specialty Metals for being a part of one hundred years of steelmaking in the city of Latrobe. Whereas on March tenth, nineteen thirteen, the Latrobe Electric Steel Company began operation melting steel in a six-ton electric arc furnace and shortly thereafter began production of high-speed and tool sheet steels. And whereas in nineteen fifty-one, the company developed new die steel products, later becoming the first to commercialize high-purity steels for the aerospace and defense industries. Throughout the years, new products were added which kept Latrobe Electric Steel Company in the forefront of specialty steelmaking. And whereas beginning in nineteen seventy-five, the company changed ownership later being renamed Timken Latrobe Steel. In two thousand and six, the company was purchased by investors and the name was changed to Latrobe Specialty Steel. Further modernization and development culminated in the acquisition of the facility by Carpenter Technology Corporation and the company was given its current name of Carpenter Technology Corporation, Latrobe Specialty Metals. Now therefore, on this one hundredth year anniversary, the mayor and the council of the city of Latrobe hereby commend and extend their gratitude to Carpenter Technology Corporation for continuing the vision of expansion and development of their exemplary specialty steel operations. On behalf of the citizens of the city of Latrobe, we offer our thanks and appreciation to Carpenter Technology Corporation, Latrobe Specialty Metals, for being a good citizen in our community. Lastly, we extend our best wishes for continued success in all our futures in Denver. Proclamation issued under the great soul of the city of Latrobe this eighth day of April two thousand and thirteen on our domini. I only have the seal, for Jim and Angela. I have no deal. This is the law.
Is the archery coach joining us? Please.
All right, this is a proclamation recognizing and commending the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen Greater Latrobe High School Boys' Ice Hockey Team. Whereas the Greater Latrobe Boys' Ice Hockey Team achieved a lofty height, firmly establishing Latrobe as hockey town Pennsylvania again, winning the WPIHL Penguins Cup and winning its fourth-class double A P I H L state hockey championship in the past six years. Whereas the team's dedication, hard work, character and strength were very apparent in the high level of competition, which propelled with state's horsemanship, school spirit and community pride. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Latrobe hereby recognize and commend the team players, Jason Joshua Basinback, Shane Rudnoff, Cameron Carr, Ryan DeFelice, Ben Douglas, Adam Ferguson, Walton Hunter, Brendan Johns, Chris Johnson, Timothy Rupen, Tanner Schaefer, Josh Singley, Daniel Stafen, Drew Tonks, Robert Dacinko, Nathan Weinbrenner, Joe Wright, head coach, John Weinbrenner, assistant coach, Brody Ockerman, assistant coach, James Singley, assistant coach, Ronald Tonks, goalie coach, Gregory Smith, and team manager, Mary Ann Singley, for their dedication, hard work and outstanding efforts in achieving their destiny of becoming the P I H L state hockey champion. Further, our community extends its gratitude, appreciation and thanks for the great honor bestowed upon the Greater Latrobe area by these fine young men. Proclamation issued under the great soul of the city of Latrobe, eighth day of April two thousand and thirteen on our domini. City council and mayor.
You know what, you know what, I would like to make a motion that we send those under the seal of Latrobe, a sufficient number to be sent to Latrobe Carpenter Steel and also to the hockey team or the Greater Latrobe School District. With copying the resolution or the motion and the proclamation.
Each one, each player and coach will receive a proclamation for themselves for their merit.
Okay, and it would be certified then too?
It'll be under the seal, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone. We'll go to board authority reports now, backup number eight. Thanks for staying while we do that. Marty here. And Charlie?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one announcement, our chairman, Lord Mark Downey is in a rest home now, and I hope for his best, he's up in Greensburg, I forget the name of it, but it's up near where Dr. Cook at, who blew off. I went up to see him and he's really not doing too well. So maybe we could ask, give him to say a couple of words for him. I have to take over the chair again, I gave it up, he took it, I guess I'll have to go back.
Okay, thanks for telling us, Charlie.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody else standing towards Rosie? Do you have anything special?
Just a reminder that April twenty-second is coming and approaching fast, the Playland Build, the week of April twenty-second, I would imagine they're still looking for volunteers, but there are a tremendous amount of local support and volunteers, and I know some of the days have been filled, so if you are interested, please contact Latrobe Unity Parks and Rec and volunteer your time and your talent. Or if you're like me and you have no talent, then just your time.
Well, you just don't use a saw.
I won't use a saw now. I'll just sand.
You don't take a blued it out, I think. You can't use a certain saw, you get to putz your.
Probably I'm going to do, I'll go for it. Anybody else? Board of authority reports? Okay, department reports? Chief Boomer?
Last summer, we did a grant application for the Ben Roethlisberger Foundation for Canine. We did receive the grant, we received a ten thousand dollar grant for the Canine program. That puts our fundraising up over seventy thousand dollars for the Canine that we've raised so far for that project. Also, Mike Wigan had attended accreditation seminar last week. He wanted to report some of these facts to us, we're much further along in our accreditation and most departments that began at the same time. Four departments will be accredited in the state this year, and eighty-two out of fourteen hundred departments in the state are accredited. Hopefully will be done soon. We will be done with our policy by the end of June, and we should have a mock assessment for our accreditation where they'll come in and do a dry run on our policy by the end of the year. That's what we're scheduling for. I'd also like to bring your attention to this flyer that's up front. April seventeenth at six PM at LES, there'll be a drug awareness summit, we'll have a lot of guest speakers, and it'll be a new program that's put together by already parvening in the Westmore County Passes. So I'd like to see good attendance there. Thank you.
What date is that, Mr. Bolton?
Seventeenth. The flyers are up front.
Congratulations on the grant. Nice work.
Okay, chief, present.
I just have a couple of things and to clarify on some of the misconception going around on some of the incidents we had in town. There was an incident out on one-twelve East Grant where there was a situation out there that risked quite a catastrophe to that portion of the neighborhood out there and that portion of town. At one-twelve, there was people illegally dumping flammables and it got into the storm basins. We were there for two and a half hours. There was probably eight, ten homes that had critical levels of explosion levels in them. The hydrocarbon levels were up to probably seventy-six percent. Explosion levels were up over three percent, which is critical. We had to turn off all the appliances. I did speak with the lady from DEP. I would recommend that somebody, somebody takes action against these guys out there in that garage and shuts them down because there's been numerous complaints. That could have been a very, very bad situation out there. I got a call, I went out, never, never dreaming that I would run into the situation we had. And it was, it was very critical. We were there for two and a half hours flushing the storm sewers. So, just to let you know, DEP was contacted, I sent them a report, and hopefully they do something, and those people out there that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing in there are actually shut down. The fire uptown on Main Street, I was with the state police fire marshals for three hours on Friday morning, and I don't know what your people are hearing, it wasn't a cigarette, it wasn't this, there was no determination made. It was ruled accidental, and there was no determination on what started it. We did find the points of origin, I was pretty confident at the night of the fire, but still, when I can't determine what physically caused it, I called the state police and there was three of them, two from Greensburg, Berwick and one from Indiana. So, before you start printing all your crap, come to the person who might be able to tell you. Latrobe paper printed, suspicious, I never told them suspicious, I told them it was under investigation, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the chief, what was the address of that?
One-twelve East Grant.
Is that where the?
World Lepowski Building.
Alex, we're going to have somebody go to the zoning board and tell them what all happened there and stuff like that. Can I know their grandfathered in right now?
Just quickly, it's a, it's a commercial industrial use that has been grandfathered into a residential zone. In other words, we predated the city's zoning ordinance, it would not be allowed to be built there today. However, it has had a track record of being a nuisance within that neighborhood. It has had letters that have really prescribed acceptable behavior, which they have now exceeded, and there is at the same time being circulated among the neighbors, a petition to have deemed a nuisance property. And I believe if we're able to have that petition and the proper designation, the grandfathering rules that it's been able to exist under would be revoked. So, I'm getting a quizzical look from my solicitor, but nonetheless, that's where we're heading. And we take very seriously that it's unacceptable, as the chief said, he was very concerned, called me that night, called me in the morning, and it's something that we're as well trying to address through our codes.
Was that the storm sewer or was the sanitary sewer involved?
It was the storm basins, it wasn't the sewage. It went into the storm basins, the runoff, so, but it backfed through all of the floor drains into those homes. I, I got several calls, I went out there and by the time we realized what was going on, I got to the front door of Joyce Matankas house.
Did it actually get into the part of the wastewater system? That's what I'm asking, I guess.
Richard, I couldn't tell you that, you'd have to contact the water treatment plant. I do know it went into the storm basins. We flushed for two and a half hours, we opened the hydrant out there. I had two sections of those down in there for two and a half hours.
There are some very strict and stringent rules if it goes into the wastewater system, and there's very large fines and even imprisonment if, if it continues.
You might want to check with them down there.
All right, thank you.
I had no reports on it from there.
Joe?
Thank you, I'll be brief. With the changing weather here, public works activities have started changing too. We started trying to clean up the downtown, sweeping, cleaning gutter lines, picking up litter. We poured some concrete on some sidewalks already that we had to restore, we cleaned a couple of catch basins, and we started patching in some alleys and some streets. The nice weather usually brings a lot of complaints. Give us another week or two of nice weather to go out there, and by all means, if we haven't addressed your problem as far as cleaning or a storm basin or patching up an alley or a pothole, give us a call in, give us a little more time. We're just getting into the nice weather now, but we've made pretty good headway in the last few weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item is under the police department, it is a resolution which reads, establishing a handicap parking space on Avenue B. Whereas chapter two fifty-six, vehicles and traffic permits the establishment of handicap parking spaces by resolution to be formally ratified by ordinance. Whereas the council of the city of Latrobe now desires to establish a handicap parking space at thirty Avenue B for property of Deborah A. Stanko, now therefore be resolved, section one, that a handicap parking space located on the southerly side of Avenue B, specifically thirty Avenue B adjacent to property of Deborah A. Stanko being the same as hereby designated as a handicap parking space, and should the applicant no longer reside at thirty Avenue B then, and in that event, the handicap parking space designation shall cease and terminate. Section two, that appropriate city officers being or hereby authorized and directed to take steps necessary and place all proper signage to carry into effect this resolution. Section four, that within resolution shall become effective immediately, and section five, that any and all other resolutions inconsistent here with or being the same are hereby repealed. Resolving council this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I say move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boltonary, second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion?
We do let them know that this handicap doesn't mean just them only, if somebody else in that neighborhood has a handicap, they can park there, right?
Lady, that was made clear with the resident.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
This is resolution two thousand and thirteen eighteen. Mr. Forge?
Yes.
Mr. Boltonary?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Number seven, yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item appears under the administration finance department, also a resolution authorizing the disposition of public records set forth on attached schedules for disposition of the records of the officer department of the city of Latrobe. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe, in accordance with the municipal records manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of public municipal records set forth on schedule A attached to. Section two, that the city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to carry out the disposition of the public municipal records set forth on schedule A and to carry into effect, the within resolution, section three, the within resolution shall become effective immediately, and section four, that anyhow other resolutions consistent here with being same are hereby repealed. Attached to the resolution is schedule A outlining the disposition of records within the tax department. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, Mr.?
Some move, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Boltonary?
I have a question.
Sorry.
Mr. Kelly, you referenced schedule A, I only have the schedule C.
No, no, same schedule.
The one that I put in the packet was C, but he changed it to A, so it was already after the fact, I couldn't, I couldn't tear the packets all apart.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yes.
I'll fix it. Okay, Barb?
officer being or hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Some move, Madam Mayor.
I'll second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Jim, second. Any question or discussion? Question, discussion? Questioning? Okay.
This is Resolution 2013-20. Mr. Divinangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Baldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Five yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
That's it as far as the agenda items, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Unfinished business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to bring up what I do every month, crosswalk situation.
Closer than you think, Mr. Baldenary.
How close might that be, Mr. Kelly?
By the end of next week.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring something up, if you don't mind, not necessarily rising to a proclamation, but nonetheless, I'd like to make a motion that we record that Timothy Hewitt, who is a level attorney, had won the Iditarod race. And it's over 1,000 miles through the Northwest Territories and the Yukon. And he has done this, I think this is the fifth time. Mr. Hewitt has a practice and has also worked for the city of Latrobe in handling some of the pensions and retirements. Some of the inside stories that I learned, there are these, that first of all, he gained about 17 pounds before he started the race. And when he came back, he had already lost the 17 pounds and 15 more pounds. So he traveled mostly in 30-degree and 40-degree below zero weather, carrying his pack, which had to weigh at least 50 pounds, and he was on foot. He told us that he lived on peanut butter, and he would eat a jar of peanut butter every day, which he squeezed into little packets. And then about two hours prior to the time that he was going to eat it, he'd put it inside his coat, and it would get soft enough that he could actually eat it. So he's back, and I think he's gaining back his weight. But anyway, Madam Mayor, if you'd care to, I'd just like to make a motion that we do have an international champion in our midst, so for Timothy Hewitt.
Let's have a regular motion?
I'll second.
Second? Okay. Mr. Scapora?
I just want to make a.
Just make a motion honoring him as the international champion of the Iditarod.
Or are you honoring him by doing a proclamation for him? Is that the motion?
No, no. We're not going to do a proclamation. I just wanted to enter it into the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Jim. We did part of the new business. Alex?
Nothing more. As far as new business, my manager's report stands to you as written. Just a couple of things. We have mentioned the waste contract. There will be a meeting for pre-proposal, a pre-bid meeting, next Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. at the transfer station to answer questions related to prospective bidders for that. And you know, other than that, we are ordering a security system, camera system for the garage. We look to that to be installed soon. There's a number of other things in the manager's report. Welcome when, you know, council members have concerns or interest to come see me, and I'll be glad to answer questions or help understand some of the things we're doing. Thanks. Oh, dare I forgot. I do have one business. Our Exella Health system has submitted to city hall a couple hundred signatures asking that city council address the post-acute medical rehabilitation center. They want city council to strongly oppose the building of the post-acute medical rehabilitation center off of Route 30 in Unity Township. I guess on the basis that it presents a competitor, and they want you to vote to tell the supervisors of Unity Township not to support the post-acute medical facilities plan. And so I want to present to council, as was presented to me April 5th, a couple hundred petitions signed by those interested in you considering this motion and moving on it.
We should do that tonight? When's the meeting?
I didn't receive those until Friday and today.
What is the meeting? Madam Mayor, it seems it's imperative. I would like to amend the agenda if I have a second to put this on the agenda.
Do we need to do two separate amendments? One to amend the agenda, and then one to add this to agenda? Or can it be the same thing?
So it's one motion to amend the agenda?
To add this.
To add a motion for action.
Is some move?
Second.
I think we just have one. I need to write.
Yeah. Just a.
We need to make a motion. The motion is to support Exella Health. And then now to amend the agenda.
We need to move on that.
Okay. All in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Post? Your motion agenda? All right. Now.
I make a motion if we agree with the prayer of the petition.
Wait a minute. What are they asking us to do? A resolution?
Support their protestations against.
Yeah, I know, but they want something in writing from us, correct?
I think they asked us to have. Now, here's the last one.
Consider the ramification of the board's decision. Is that what you mean?
Yeah. The last one they're asking for.
We are counting on U.S. leaders in this community to make the right choice. Tell the supervisors not to approve post-acute medical plans.
If I know it. I think if we show support for this plan, the Unity Township supervisors will be against it. They will take whatever tack.
Well, I'm not going to.
Tell them.
The opposite, which.
I think the issue is that in the interest of preserving our hospital and the Exella Health, we don't need another competitor moving in here.
No, we're not going to tell them.
No, we're just voting in support of the hospitals protesting this, the building of this facility.
Saving jobs too. And I think they said 70 jobs would be lost if this was go through.
That would be countywide.
I think I had a motion that we agree with the prayer of the petition, and I didn't get a second. I don't believe.
I'll second that, Richard.
All right.
All right. Any questions up there?
Madam Mayor, I happen to be one of the people that doesn't use this particular rehabilitation service, but I do attend rehabilitation at the heart clinic, and I've been doing it for 13 years, twice a week. It's very organized, very professional, and very, very helpful. I certainly would be in favor of this.
All right. Barb, do you have that?
I have a question too.
A motion?
Yeah. I just want to hear what Barb had.
What's the word? What's the motion for sure?
That you're agreeing with the petition in supporting the supervisors not allowing this to be built.
Okay. Mike?
This is the same Exella Health that helped us with our request to them to stay in town. Or is this a different Exella Health? That's my question.
Any other?
Nonetheless, let's not cut our necks despite our.
Still, we still have the hospital.
You do it your way.
Oh, we still have a hospital. How many towns have hospitals? All right. Any other?
Yes, the vote.
I know. I want to.
Well, you may have all of that.
Okay, yeah. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Right post?
Aye.
Okay. All right. One name. Motion carried. Thank you. That's it?
And Mr. Baldenary, I think your comment is true. What happened, you say?
Let's write this.
All right. I don't have anything else to say, so may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I say move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scapora?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody. [inaudible]. Thank you. May I have a motion?
I say move, Madam Mayor.
Baldenary, second? Questions or discussion? Thank you. All right. Any other?
We do let them know that as a handicap, it doesn't mean just them only. If somebody else in that neighborhood has a handicap, they could park there, right?
Baby, that was made clear with the resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? This is Resolution 2013-18. Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.